Usually.
Fashion landline.
I swapped over to, I just, I just poured my number to, I'd be second over, but it's all I can do. No, I have to, I was in.
Yeah, the phone book went out this year, it's paper thin, because there's no landline anymore.
Well, I still have a, theoretically, I mean, listed, not listed.
Oh, right.
It's a 765, but it's IP.
I see.
I don't have to know why.
Yeah, you'd have to do.
What a pain.
Yeah, yeah.
Remember the old days, you could just pick up the phone and talk to the operator, and she'd go, "Oh."
It was like time, unless she was way out of country.
I was in Lake.
We used to have Burlington 4527.
4578. The magic stuff, there's like five, yeah, there's five.
There was a name and then five.
Yeah, good.
Or it was light.
Yeah, October 2nd meeting of the Depot Bay City Council is called to order. Please rise, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome. Could you fill the role please?
Callender.
Here.
Short.
Here.
Goddard.
Here.
Gambino.
Here.
Left.
Here.
Bates.
Here.
Grant.
All right.
We have a board.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes? Your amendment that we approve the minutes of September 18th, regular meeting?
Second.
And the executive session as well. Short seconded by Goddard, any discussion? Full roll please.
Callender.
Short.
Goddard.
Yes.
Gambino.
Yes.
Left.
Bates.
Bill.
Grant.
All right.
So move. Grant.
All right.
Okay, our first order of business tonight under special orders is, um, firefighters I know. Phil, would you like to come up and?
Yeah.
This is Phil Johnson.
First thing on the agenda that I asked, um, I have to put on was the introduction of the new assistant fire chief. As you all know, Chief Williams left to take the job someplace else in the rural fire district, employing me fire chief back in May. We did a nationwide search and we came up with Brian Daniels from, Ashkenaz from Southern California, a small apartment down there. Um, and he's got lawful experience, but rather than be trying to talk about Brian and maybe introduce himself and some of his background, he's already moved into the community, he lives in Little Rock.
I have two daughters, a 19-year-old and a 14-year-old, and they're actually very good in here. Chief Johnson brought me on, um, based on some experience I had with wildland, urban interface firefighting, grant administration, and some labor management practices that I've done. And I think so far we're a pretty good fit. We've had a number of pretty interesting incidents here. So the little town of Depot Bay, or the little quiet Depot Bay Fire District that Bill invited me to, or Chief Johnson invited me to, hasn't been so quiet. We've had some significant events and learned a lot, and really excited and proud to be part of this wonderful organization. If you've seen your family and you want to have a coffee, it's known to me a little bit more, I'm definitely open to that.
You have any questions for Ryan?
I'm curious, I kind of was raised in Southern California, what town?
I, I was raised in Forest Falls, California, near Big Bear.
Oh.
Population about 800. I then moved my family to the town of Beaumont, California, near Palm Springs.
Oh, yeah, that looks small.
Yeah, and I worked for the San Manuel Fire Department for past 18 years in San Manuel, New York.
I grew up in San Manuel Valley.
Okay.
All the way to that.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any, oh, no. Do you have much experience from wildfires that aren't, that have big trees?
Yes, sir.
Sounds like it. Where the area described this, so why the same.
Part of the reason, uh, you know, it's quite a move to move from Southern California to an entirely different state. Um, and for the past five years I've been deployed as part of the management team with the Forest Service to Oregon, and most recently to check the bar fire. So I've spent my summers in the Pacific Northwest and I thought, this is a pretty nice little place, but it's not on fire. So, um, even at its worst, it was still beautiful in that spot. The environment, the people, the character, everything about it was a little more special. And probably a really good spot to raise my family and push them out in the world.
Awesome. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Brian.
Welcome.
Yes, and welcome to Depot Bay.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, second thing that is before you is just a heads up on, um, our operating levy. 2015, to be exact, we put a levy out to hire up to seven firefighters. That levy was able to find six positions, so we were able to have three firefighters per shift. And that levy expires in 2020, 2021 that year, so we're getting close to the time to renew it. And the board of directors and myself, and even back when Chief Williams was still there, started looking, going out early. And trying to figure out, what do we need to do? Well, as you know, employee costs are going up. Uh, one of the things that tipped the fire district, Phil, is our volunteers have gone down. Our numbers keep dwindling, um, there's mandates on training, there isn't time for the younger folks to volunteer. Or, I hate to say it, but even the desire for someone to volunteer, you ask them, they go, "I don't want to do that." Um, so when we started looking at it, it was, well, maybe we need to not only maintain the ones we've got, but national codes, the National Fire Protection Association, which writes standards through the fire service, which OSHA says is law, even though they're supposed to be a, just a voluntary standard, says you have to have four firefighters on scene before you can go into a burn building. So the best way that we've found to achieve that in discussion with the board is to up the number of firefighters on ship to four. So starting, if this levy passes, starting in year 20, 2020, 2021, that's the time closer, uh, we would, uh, be asking the citizens to vote for an increase in that levy to a dollar nine, so that we can bring that fourth firefighter on per ship. But not only give that, but also start putting some money aside for some of the capital purchases. I don't know if any of you pressed a fire truck recently, but a, a fire engine, and I quote, what we run right now costs about $500,000. And you get about 25 years' worth of useful life out of it. Our newest fire truck is eight years old, our oldest right now is 25 years old. So we need to start looking, you know, two, three years down the road, start putting some more money aside. We are putting a little bit aside every year, but, you know, the, 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 the cost of doing business in the fire service, we just haven't been able to keep that up. You know, our regular levy, our permanent levy rate is 83 cents a thousand. Um, well below the state numbers, um, most districts. Newsletter with all of our staff. Number six, unfortunately, if it doesn't pass and don't get an extension passed, sometimes we're not on the expiration of the levy, we will lose six positions in the fire. Oh, now, this, this coming November, but the, this levy won't take effect until fiscal year 2021.
Right, I understand, but it's, it's, uh, it's, you're putting it out to vote now.
Yes.
Yeah.
Not later, if, if it doesn't go down, we can re-vote, reevaluate, and.
Maybe have time to do it a different way, backtrack a little bit, is that what you think, maybe, huh?
And that, it's possible, we got to have a look to see what the things are. You know, I've been very conservative on it, there's, there's things that, due to labor costs, um, per, we have no control over the per stuff. And that's right in our costs, uh, health insurance, we're able to limit that a little bit, but, you know, we have labor man, or labor agreements that we have to also meet with, so. Um, again, we're, we're trying to do everything with a very small pot of money. That's where we're at, we're trying to be proactive so that, number one, the guys that we did, fire trainers we did hire, that they have a little bit of job security and they don't all abandon ship going, "We don't know what's going to happen in, in two years, so we're going to go find jobs elsewhere." You know, we've spent money to get them trained, get them up to speed, they know the community, they've been body members of the, of the fire department here for a few years now, so. That's why the board has decided that, you know, now is time to try and go out and get it, and, you know. If you have any questions at any time, feel free to reach out to me at the fire station.
Thank you, Phil, and thank you, Brian, for coming out to make that work, I appreciate your taking the time.
Thanks, Chief.
That's mine. And here it, where our decorum is, is in place.
The, um.
It was nice to meet you.
Reports from officers. Anything from the salary committee? No, it's on track, I, I met Ruth at the LCP. Oh, good, okay.
She was there then.
Good, yeah, okay. Uh, any other officers, boards, or standing committees want to speak up? I think you want to wait until we get to the agenda item. What?
She accepted this one. Is it this new one?
Oh, one to tell us. Oh, okay, yes, I picked that up, the, um, staff. Yes, any other reports? Nothing, nothing, okay. Let's move on to public comments. Anyone out there have anything they want to talk about? Uh, unfinished business, the harbor. And at this point, I think Liz Martin wants to speak.
Thank you. Could you be near one? I should have asked you before, and I. Nice to see everyone tonight. I'm in my first harbor commissioning, and it was very insightful, and I learned a lot, and I feel very welcome by the crew. And, um, while I was at the committee, I brought up the, the harbor, and my two friends that may not be forward, and after speaking of time, fellow members, stay out, keep talking, and I find it something that I can add. No, I'm not going to get nervous about this. Let's just hope that the passes, let's hope the appropriation comes through. Ideas together, I'm present at, um, at national level. Whether that is going back to Washington DC with some other coalitions, or if we're just putting together, um, some information, perhaps. As we have those really unique, we don't fit into their little hole or what. Very obvious, what is it that makes people base so unique, what, what keeps us going? We don't fit into their categories anymore. And we need to point out to them why this is so important and why, you know, it needs to be done. And again, I tend to take life this way, I'd like to be on that proactive side of it, instead of sitting back and going, darn, they missed it. I was really, um. I'm a little checking on this kind of feeling, a lot of dying, and fear of them, and I need to see what you, what you'd like to do. We want to form, you know, add help committees, get together, um, a couple people from the harbor commission, a couple people from, um, the council, and get our numbers, get our stuff together, and, 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 like I said, time is of the essence. We can't wait till the next council meeting, because we're going to be too late. So, um, and I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to be quick about this or anything, but, you know, if, if we're going to do. They were very clear at that meeting. On 30 days, because it was 30 to 40 days before, and that was only a week ago. And Jeff and I tried to look up the appropriations bill today. They're eager to help. They, they get it, they get how important it is, and they want to see this go through, so, um. But what I got from them, it's gotta be a push of this, you know what I mean? It's tough.
We have to do it, it's our part.
Yeah, it is, and we've got, you know, we've got all the components here to, to make this work. The, uh, the coast guard, you know, the coast guard's got to have this, the core open and navigating. You've got it, you know, vibrant fishing in charter business. You know, all of what's said again, the footprint is huge. Every restaurant is up there, every lodging facility depends on this harbor working. Whether or not they want to admit it or not, it's true, that's what keeps things going, so. And if we keep feeding the wells, well, we'll be okay. So, um, anyway, so, I, I was, how does that relate to this email that was in our packet? Um, this one from.
The lobbyists, that's one of the lobbyists.
Oh, yeah. Because it makes it sound as if it's a sure thing, that the Army Corps of Engineers will get that, get money for Oregon courts. So then are we lobbying them?
No, let's, let's hear what Ryan has to say, because he was just.
I, I may be able to shed a little light on that. Ray Boushager is a lobbyist, as our mayor just stated. And the appropriation is there for the Corps, but it hasn't changed anything as far as what the Corps has allocated for dredging. So they've got their money to go ahead and spend, as they have indicated that they will spend it, without spending a penny here in Depot Bay.
Depot Bay has a Thera. But Thera headquartered in court for the Oregon area, right? The Corps?
Yes, but they, uh, they answer to DC.
Oh, okay.
Let's, let's, let's be perfectly honest about this. The last time we were able to get a change, it was because we had two people walking the halls in Washington, visiting not only our congressional representatives, but other ones who are important to getting that money freed up. And that's what we're going to have to do this time. If we're really serious about this, we are going to have to send somebody to Washington.
Who was that?
That was Lauren and Dorinda, and they went on their own dime. They were on a vacation and they were nearby, and so they took advantage of the time. And they went and visited every single legislator who could possibly help affect the change, and it worked, because someone who was knowledgeable was there, talking with them, and that makes all the difference.
And that got our, got us dredged?
That got us dredged.
Not, not in that instance. What that accomplished was a, uh, the, NOAA.
Right.
Authorizing a fishery that had been considered for over a decade. And they sat on it, and sat on it, and sat on it. And it took congressional interest to get NOAA and the Pacific Fisheries Management Council to move on that. And they did so within 30 days. What fishery? The Long Leader Fishery. For? Rockfish? What do you mean, long leader, you mean like? For sport? Sport fishing, recreational fishery, allowing us to target mid-water species offshore, outside the 47th curve. So this thing, that had nothing to do with dredging at the time? It had nothing to do with dredging.
No, it had to, it had to do with how to be effective politically when you need something political. And how you do it is you go to the people who make, who are the decision makers.
Jack Brown was, you know.
Yes, Jackie Brown was another one, he went, they went almost out for a year.
Neighbors for Kids was.
Right.
That was money from Sullivan in Washington DC.
If we want federal money, we have to go there to fight for it. That's just the way it is. So what is it that you would like from us? You would like?
Okay, so what, definitely get what my ambition is, like I said, to go ahead and form a committee, and we like this league, but, you know, get, to get together, get, get our reference materials together, um, come back to Schrader's and Merkley's office saying, yes, we, we want to go, you know, with the coalition or, or on our own, who we need, but, I mean. That's basically, you know, and start together on a PowerPoint and, and get letters of recognition from the coast guard, and everyone here in Canada, we can, I mean, I, I know it sounds grassroots, but I think grassroots is what we need right now. And we really need to show them.
Has anybody, um, contacted the, either the regional commander, or the coast guard, or from our CO down here on our base, talked to them about this?
I was waiting till I talked to you, that was, I didn't go down.
Oh, I'm thinking, I mean, it was, I mentioned this some time ago, because, uh, the coast guard, Homeland Security has their own budget, okay? And, uh, I just thought it might be, and if nobody's done it, I mean, like I said, it's, uh, they, uh, this facility down here is a training facility. Nationized by the city, it's nothing to their budget, it doesn't have the same budget as, as the boards do. But it's a training facility. This is where they learn to rescue people here, okay? It's necessary for the operation of the coast guard, that's the point I would make. I would, but it's, it seems, you know, the first step as far as lobbying would be to.
Definitely doable, and I, I must respectfully disagree with you, having worked in Washington for quite some time.
Okay, how long ago was that?
No, I appreciate your comments, as far as working with. Yeah, well, information for us as far as, you know, some things that are open to.
I think it's a, I think it's a different paradigm for them. It's not, we have our board for commerce, okay, um, here in Depot Bay. The, um, Homeland Security, i.e. in this case, coast guard, has to do with protection of, of the citizens that go out of here, okay? And it's a different pot of money completely than what, um, the lobbying, the, the ports, or what money would come out through the, or lobbying, I guess, in this case, the discretion of the Army Corps of Engineers, which ports to dredge. Um, if the money is already there and the Army Corps is, are you saying, Lauren, that they, they've got discretion where it's spent, or not? Not at this level. Okay. So I just, I would call, make sure, I, the first call that, before we can go any farther in this, is call Ray Boushager. Find out where the process is at. That's, that's just me.
I think, I think she's more than ready to call Ray and to talk to the coast guard, but she wanted to come here to get the blessing of city council, so I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we authorize. To form a committee if you were to be free in the morning for, so, this, uh, cumbersome to, to see for action that she was.
Okay, I, uh, one, in terms of discussion, I would just let. The committee will wanna put something together, give a budget and get into it. You can't wait for the next meeting. What we can do is get it out to the councilors, and I can do a phone vote with the councilors to get something approved or not approved.
Right, that was gonna be council's shoes.
Yes, it can be done outside of a meeting. There's a, there's a process, but, um, but we can do it. Yes.
This is absolutely on point. If you want to accomplish this, you have to go in there and.
Okay, and for the discussion, that will.
Scotter?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
Lev?
Yes.
Yeah. Calendar?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thanks very much. I know it's been a long time. This is about doing what I do as a community member and a harbor commission member, what is right to do.
Well, you just got even out of the slogan. I appreciate it. Everyone in the room is very supportive of what you're trying to do.
Thank you very much.
Any of us can help you because.
I will call upon you. I. Anyway, that you want, uh, stay in touch with me, I would appreciate it as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, so Barbara, Brady, piling dredging.
So we've got, um, parts of pilings go, we're still, um, we've got one firm.
We're also, we can get free, get us our services, uh, for, for, um.
Another, um.
Company called West Coast Marine, they're scheduled to come down and, uh, kind of look over our harbor surveys and stuff, get, get firm quotes on the same specs that we gave for, for, um, Stephen Bergerson, there's three piles on dock three that our divers repair.
Moving forward with scheduling to get, uh, a free down to fix those pilings, um, in water. So, uh, they're, uh, working on information to get back to us about interrelated, what can, what can, for, you know, producing drilling underwater and bolting and, not real fabric, but bolting, um, angle iron under, under water to hold the pilings so it won't collapse when it is out of the water. So, and not cause much chafing when the docks go up and down. So, um, it's a, it's a pretty good idea to talk to the guy over the phone and on the computer and, and, so I'm working on getting that. Hopefully by next meeting, I'll have a, a number to give to the council to just okay it, or I'm just gonna schedule it because it really needs to be done. So, and it's my only option, looking at other places. So, there's a couple dive companies, there's one Tuesday, one in Newport, I have been both serviced down just because of they're busy and, I couldn't expedite it, other than Bergerson will work with us. So that's the piling issue. And we're also, when we're getting, uh, these quotes, you know, they're also getting the total dock replacement, uh, like Bergerson gave us that you guys had to fire a couple weeks ago, that said, piling is, that's also gonna come from West Coast Marine. So the dredging, uh, we, we kinda know where I'm at, but there was some emergency dock, formats that we're talking about with the Harbor Commission, and they requested, I think you made a motion to move forward with requesting the council to ask about, um, staff moving forward with a temp dock. That's the one on the board that we've been discussing. It's adding this temporary dock on the end, and our crew has enough material from fingers and, uh, just all that, uh, it says, was, wood that is, uh, okay to use in the, in the harbor and stuff, it's.
Brady, I don't choose because I don't know that other people in council.
Okay.
That you've ever actually gone over that idea.
Okay, so what, what this is, is, um, the fuel dock is here. This is the fueling bunker that, and the hose reels are kept in here. And the diesel and the gasoline have a hundred and fifty feet of hose. So this fuel dock's forty feet, so we have plenty of hose. So if we added on an extra dock here in a temporary situation, uh, the larger boats like the Sampson, Taco Buster, these big fifty-plus-foot deltas, get in here to fuel up, and we'd have plenty of fuel line. Now the silt level from the end, see, this is dock four here, the silt level's really shallow here, as you see in the photos, at minus tide, and it really drops off right in this area. So there's some depth in here. We've taken soundings and, and it, it, at the boat ramp, we won't impede on, that's that corner of the boat ramp. So, this is further to the west a little bit more. Add-on dock, the only issue we would have is if the ocean got rough, and it would be in a temporary situation where the crews could put it in, um, shovel over with the, uh, with the skiff that we have, and attach it when it's needed. And when it's not needed, we could take that add-on dock and take it over to the, um, transient boat launch and add it on there, and it'll help the guys launching their little boats. They have a little extra, a lot of these guys have to launch their boat, tie it up, kind of walk it down, and then they gotta go park their truck there up on the highway. So it gets confusing when the boats are jammed up down there waiting for the captains of the little boats to come down and move along. So it would help with some of that congestion. So we would only use that in, in a situation where there's a minus tide, maybe we know that week it's gonna have some low tides, we can move the temp off in there. Only when the silt's. And like I said, I think we can do it with, maybe buy some brackets and new bolts, but it's a little different than a finger dock, but we do have the material. Do you have a comment?
I think we can make it for under five thousand dollars.
We already have the material for the finger dock.
So fifty brackets and, uh, what do we do? What of the pilings?
The pilings, um, we're gonna try to get it in if we could put, get a pile in with power lines here, but in the meantime, Lars had a idea that would secure it to the other side with an armature, that, that was a name for it, and some technology into that. I'm not real familiar with it, but we're gonna go over securing it somehow to the jetty rock, just on a temporary situation, something we can hook up to that will go up and down with the tide, but I'm not sure on the whole, but, um, he and Pogo both were trying to explain to me on scratch pad how these other docks used to be like that over on the Imperial Marine side back in the day. So, there's a few ideas, but definitely we're gonna get a pile in there for sure. I'm gonna drive over soon.
Mayor, I'd like to compliment staff of thinking outside the box on this and coming up with an innovative idea that maybe get us through a, a, a difficult time until we get the dredging done.
Yes.
As long as you get it out of there before a big storm comes in or we'll end up in the big parking lot.
Yeah.
That's, uh.
It doesn't, it doesn't go in until the spring, though.
Well, we'd have to make it, but yeah, be for next spring, you know, if we don't get the dredging done or something, you know, just, it'd always be there. In case we need it, um, also make for an extra dock too, they could tie the skiff, and we could use it as a, as a work platform, there's a lot of different uses. It won't be as big as a dock, but, yeah, I mean, we could make it within the next, uh, I mean, we'd have it done by November, you know, we, they could make it pretty quick.
But having that dock in the winter time.
But we're not gonna really store it there in the winter in the surges. We'll definitely have it put away. We can always untie it, tie it up to the fuel dock when there's a storm or a surge, or, like I said, put it back over where the, um, the wash docks are, because it's already piling in there, we could tie it to it. Or we could take it out of the water, if, you know, definitely in the winter, we could store it there, just like the other, like, Traven stores their docks down and Fader stores theirs, you know. I, I think we could secure it for the winter, for sure. I wanna make sure we could do it where it's a quick connect, almost the hinges are easy to, there's some new hinges they make now that are, just pop in and, you know, it's kind of, doesn't get hurt doing it, but, uh, yeah. I think two of my guys are really savvy and, and fabric. That's the answer, just for short term, but, I mean, definitely fix the problem, but I think it would help the bigger boats getting in and not being able, so they can't get fueled, at least they can get fueled this way.
Okay. Could potentially alleviate a problem periodically too, because as we get close to our dredging cycle, whether we're ignored or not, uh, it's still difficult to get into that fuel dock.
Yeah. It is. I mean, there's actually, at low bar, there's a, there's a indentation from the boat bow, from the valves of the boats, uh, you can see the keel outline, just like it sits in the mud, it's like a, like a form. Yeah, it's not fair. So, I, I think it's a good quick fix, but we'll move forward with it. I think the council needs to make a motion if she wants to, um, I could just move forward with making the, the dock and, um, okay.
Okay, um, do you want to move on now?
That's it, dredging, yeah, that was it.
Um, Depot Bay, Glendale, Sanitary District agreement.
Okay, uh, at this point, Glendale is up to date on their monthly payments. They still have not settled up on the final payment for last year. We will be discussing that at the next advisory meeting, which, uh, you all got the email, it was moved back to the ninth. Right now I'm talking with them, and they're checking with their board to see if we can do it in the morning at ten. So, I will let you know, I should know tomorrow for sure.
What, what time it will be, like, will be on the night. What would be the earliest future? We, we, we can get together on that, okay?
Nine o'clock, so we, are we current today?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure yet.
Good afternoon.
Maybe not quite four. Is it two?
It was scheduled for two o'clock. Let me talk to them in the morning, and then I'll make phone calls.
Okay, uh, let's move on now to new business, the Central Spec and Care, I think.
Yeah, got a, a quote from, now this, what this covers is the collection system, which is the field of sewer manhole sewer pipe. There's a company that I use, and they, uh, they camera the lines, and this helps with the I and I. When, uh, we TV the sewer lines, we're by, we're, we're following up with the, our permits mandating of addressing I and I, and also with our agreement with, um, Glendale Sanitary that we're moving forward with, um, I and I control. But what our goal is, is to get the entire collection system TV, and we've done all of Little El Cove, South Point, so these are areas that need to be, uh, TV that haven't been addressed for many, many years. North Point, Williams Avenue through Collin Street and the side streets, Davenport, Sunny View, Eastland, these areas, um, I need to get TV. So, uh, also there's some repairs that they weren't able to get to the last.
So, a few of those are on here. They have another robot that goes in, and these machines actually will, you lift the manhole, put the machine in, and it goes and fixes the cracks, seals, does the whole thing. So, it's really a, really a system that we've done it, um, the last, I think, good years, we've been using TPR, and it's really been paying off, but.
What diameter pipe does it work on?
It'll, it'll go anywhere from, uh, like, it depends, I mean, two, as big as diameter, mo- most sewer pipes are around eight in neighborhoods.
Uh-huh.
So that's the most common.
Right.
But, yeah, and concrete are the ones that crack and get grease in them because their concrete gets cold, so when grease hits it and soap and just, these machines go in and scrub and clean, and it'll seep when it's raining too, you can see the leaks, but you can also see the cracks, and this machine will go in and crack and, or seal the cracks.
Do a smaller diameter pipe?
Yeah, all the way down to four.
Okay.
So, um, those are usually lapable, but, uh.
This is a good, uh, quote, I just wanted to.
Uh, get the council's approval, it's.
Twenty-nine, three eighty, um, and like I said, it also reported the, uh, CIP, the cast employee. So, it's, it's.
All in the thing.
All right.
Is there a second? In the motion by Grant, that's a, you know, you're studying.
That's, 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 that's.
Yeah, yeah, it's, um, yeah, but they're not long in these CIP requests, it's usually work right in the entry of the manhole where the pipe just comes apart from gravity and that's really, um, high flows in some of these, but, yeah, it's slinging.
One more question?
Eno?
Yes.
Lev?
Yes.
Under?
Yes.
Short?
Yes.
Yeah. Absolutely. I'll contact them, and, uh, we're probably tied in with thirty to twelve, so we'll share it. Okay.
Okay, who's one of the correspondents?
Yeah. We have a couple pieces of. Correspondence here, um, you all have a copy of Senate Bill fifteen sixty-six. This is, is the state legislature approved this bill, and it's a fifty-fifty match. The state can put aside, uh, a minimum of twenty-five thousand to go towards their purse, uh, responsibilities, and the state will match that. More details on it, and so I'll bring this back up at the next meeting, but I'd like everybody to read through it carefully, come back with your questions. We have until, I believe it's twenty twenty-three to put so much into the account, but we need to apply before the end of December of this year if we want to do this. This is, to me, it's a big cost savings for the city by putting this away, and they match, as we all know, hers is a big expense on us, and the obligations that we have built up over the years, this will go a long ways toward that. And we put a minimum of twenty-five or whatever we think we can afford to do.
Well, we have to, have we ever learned what our actual liability is?
We get that every year with our audit report, so we'll be getting an update on that, yes.
True.
Well, I, I wasn't here on one Sunday, uh, can't this last time, but, um, last year, she didn't have a number. She didn't know what her liability was.
Last year, she didn't have a number because legislature was still trying to determine things.
I mean, do we have?
We have not received this year's audit report.
Huh?
We have not received this year's audit.
Okay, so we don't have a number that, you know, and?
No, I can get you an approximate for the next meeting.
Well, let's, let's wait till, because Sigourney was, uh, clear on, 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 uh, any recommendation for city action, although she's just, basically reporting what we're doing is, she couldn't recommend us doing anything until we, we had a, a number and, you know, move forward for payment.
Well, but we wanna get that number before the end of December because we don't wanna miss this opportunity is the point. If we don't do it by the end of December, we miss the opportunity, that's, that's this legislation that we have. So, yes, see what you can get from her, tell her the dilemma.
Oh, yes.
You know?
Uh, hold, hold it. Twenty, if, if, this, this opportunity goes to when?
Well, we have to apply before December thirty-first of this year. And we have until twenty twenty-three to meet our obligation.
Right.
So it's, it's not like we have to come up with it right away.
Right.
But we, we just need to apply.
So, ma'am?
Yes, Watson. When we apply, do we have to have an extra twenty-five thousand or whatever, um, available to put down for our part? Do we have to guarantee that? Um, I haven't read everything yet, but I assume, I would assume we would. And if we don't, we're in big trouble because we should have been putting money aside all along for this obligation, which we have been doing.
Right.
Oh, we have been doing.
Yes. So we'll revisit this at the next meeting, yeah, with more information.
Any other correspondence?
Nothing at this time. I'll bring this up at the next meeting. It was great and I need to discuss.
Okay. City staff reports?
Yeah, so the biosolids building that Northwest Coast Metal Building. So they just need, I just need the down payment approved to get the building delivered and then there'll be just residual Nice because we'll be able to slide the dumpster through one side and then they can haul it out the other. And it's going to integrate into the UV building, which where the unit's going to be, and also not create a problem with the road around the side. But I think the only thing they have left is this building, the garage doors to put on it, and then paths on each side. So there's some asphalt I still need to get. Three thousand eight eight five.
Okay.
That's on the front. That's the down payment of the seven seven there.
Do I hear a motion?
For the West Coast Metal Buildings, three eight eighty-five.
That's the down payment.
That has down payment for the total of seventy-seven seventy estimated. I'll be able to get the plans to do the permit once we did the down payment.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Dead snow load and, I don't know what dead snow is.
Yes.
Bates?
Yeah.
Grant?
All right.
Under?
Yes.
Short?
The next thing I have was the county work crew's been in Depot Bay working the parks down There's Whale Fountain Park and they worked in all these parks, Rushdown and did quite a bit of work. We've got a few. Here the following day and did a lot of work around city, all the forty-some wheelbarrows, debris from the front and all around. They did a really good job. Good, good idea to use these guys and we get a lot of things, but it's timing, you know, if you don't have rain and you've got the crews available.